Okay, let's start then. So I'll now move over to the class to read out the list of apologies.
So we have apologies from councillor Adnitz, who has work commitments, and councillor Hodgson, who has mental problems.
Okay, do you accept those reasons for another question? Desperations of interest. The council should receive any desperation for interest in apologies for the requirements of the localism Act 2011 and to consider any applications for dispensations in relation to the local community interest or personal interest. For example, if you're a member of an organisation that made it discussed this evening, are there any declarations of interest on members in relation to the items on the agenda?
Yes, not really.
I have one declaration in that I am a member of the Fire and Show Group which is being mentioned. Thank you. So it's with my great pleasure to actually do a presentation for Mr Bull. So Mr Bull, would you like to come forward? Turn around. So Mr Bull has been our bandstand supervisor for more than twenty years. In this role, he's done an absolutely amazing job, hasn't he? And I think you've enjoyed most of it, haven't you?
I have, yes.
And all the visitors and locals know you, and they've all valued all your contributions that you've made over the years. So I would like to present this certificate to you in appreciation of your loyal service to Fire and Show Council. I've also got a little gift for you, a note to you, and a little reminder and a key thing.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you suspend standing orders so I can speak?
All right, can you suspend standing orders for Mr Bull to speak? Yes, thank you. Yes, pop it up.
Fire and Bandstand did not belong to us. It belonged to the British Legion. And eventually, after several years, the council had not been able to allocate it to the council. The council took it over and you all know about the brimming of it now. I started doing the bandstand because the person in front of me was seventy-three. He thought he was still old. I'm eighty-eight. I started on a hundred pounds a year. Ten band concerts, ten pounds per concert. A hundred pounds for the year. But the bollards were up, so you couldn't drive in. You had to find somewhere down one of the streets or on the cretin. Come on, I'm joking, you can't find it. I'm parking car there and then pick up the speakers and the microphone and snag it up to the bandstand. Eventually, they took the bollards down so we could drive the car in and unload everything that we had. And everything seemed to go very well, apart from electricity. Because the speakers had to be charged back here on Monday morning rather than me to pick up the following Friday. No. I charged them up. It wasn't far from like that. So having to be here on Friday as well as on the bandstand on Sunday was just too much. So I charged them up and it all came out of the loo ring that I got. Electricity was solved by me. I said, it's climb on chairs and take a little panel down at the top and make sure that we can plug some electricity into there. So get the electrician to run the cable down onto the top of the column at high level out of the breach of the kids with a standard two forty volt blue socket. Put a blue socket on this on our thing and we're away. And it's still like that today. I've had many happy years. I've seen a lot of ladies. There were three ladies who used to sit on the left of the bandstand to read it. One lady. No ladies. Also a gentleman who scarborough, who came on the bus every week, put ten p in for the first time round and ten p in on the second time round. He's gone. Also, a gentleman came every week without fear from Hesel in Holton. He wasn't there last year and he'll not be this year. I've enjoyed it, ladies and gentlemen councillors. I've enjoyed doing it. Don't forget this job was taken away from me. And to Mersey Drive, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before, Honley was the band. And I've been attending to band concerts and sitting there. And Honley, where they practice, is next to where the source in most parts are made. So they had this made for me. It's saved on it. This is their life. Nothing to do and all they're to do is in. Many thanks for all your hard work from Honley Band.
Oh, fabulous.
It couldn't be worse, couldn't it?
A bit like me, actually. Well, we have very appreciated this. Thank you. Thank you very much for training our new guy as well. Because she's doing a great job in terms of honour.
And I have promised him that next year, first time, he has to go to the chapel. I will go with him.
Oh, good luck, thank you.
Because I've been in the chapel with Chris and showing him everything to do. But you can't take anything on one visit, can you?
No.
When you're not doing it, you know, so this is where you plug that in. This is where the light switches are.
And thank you. And you prepare and keep in touch, okay? Thank you very much.
I own him, I'm the co-host.
In fact, if you want to go and see him, you can move.
Thank you.
I might give out as well, because you're off to another moment. So thank you, you prepare. Agenda item four, public participation council. Members of the public may now speak. Please note fifteen minutes available for members of the public to speak. And each person is allowed up to three minutes. Mr Poplin, maybe you want to say something?
Yes, I'd very much like to.
Okay, it's nice to see you, thank you. Okay, so report to the council. I'll start with my mayoral report. So I've had a fairly busy month supporting community groups. I was pleased to be invited to the tenth year celebration of Keith Hiley Tidy. The group has worked tirelessly across our town and keep areas looking cleaner and tidier over the years. The group has made up for many, an army of volunteers, who do a fantastic job and should be proud to have people willing to give their time and efforts in this way. And credit must also be given to the organisers involved who have kept the group going all this time. So that was, that's a nice morning. I was then invited to the award, to present an award, the Margaret Hunt's Trophy at the Fire Arts Society Evening. The guests chose when we had a fist on the evening and the most staring piece of artwork, which was good. It was an enjoyable time and it was great to see the amazing work and talent in the room. It was the first year that the trophy has been awarded in memory of Margaret, who was a past president of the society. And it was a fitting legacy to her contribution to the society for the many years she has ever served. So that was enjoyable. The council had a successful event in the bandstand to commemorate the eightieth year of DJ Day. The weather was kind and both the Fire and Show Group and the Vintage Vocalist entertained the public. The afternoon was well attended and everyone joined in to mark the event. And it was quite joyous, with great atmosphere. The Vintage Vocalist was fantastic and she herself really enjoyed her first visit to Fireing. I would like to thank our clerk Vanessa for all her hard work in helping to organise and in attending the event as well. But thank you Vanessa. Finally, again, under green flag award for our fabulous parks and green spaces. I join the friends of the fire parks in raising the flag, which they have done now for the past eighteen years. So that was well done and well deserved to all the volunteers in the paid gardens from North Yorkshire Council. Again, without the commitment and effort for this group, Fireing would not be as well maintained and the spaces as well enjoyed by residents and visitors. I have several further engagements planned for next month, which I'll report back on in future meetings. Finally, town council has been informed that the consultation report on community, around the community transport solution has been completed and will be shared with us as soon as possible for consideration. The release of this part is more likely to be October. Well, it's with great sadness that our new clerk has resigned this week due to the hostility she feels she's experienced and the lack of support demonstrated by some members of the council. In fact, this is Anne-Marie's last meeting with us. I personally want to apologise to Anne-Marie for the shameful behaviour demonstrated by a minority of members on the council. And I want to wish Anne-Marie every success going forward in her career. Fireing Town Council have again lost a good person and elect Helen Clark, who was diligent in her role and acted appropriately and within our politics procedures, regulations and within the law. Anne-Marie would have led this council to a position where it needs to be. This year has been given the chance and the right support. I have some other statements to make, but I'm going to do that in the section for explosion of the press and public. So that's my part this evening. Agenda item six, North Yorkshire Council's report. Oh, sorry. Sorry, councillor Cockroft.
Just like I say, Madam Mayor, I would fully concur with your comments about Anne-Marie.
Thank you.
I would just like to say regarding the meeting, the consultation, that there was a meeting with the MP which got cancelled and other groups until this resolution has come into place from the North Yorkshire group of people. Just to support what you're saying is that they are also waiting for everything to come back to stakeholders to hear it together at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It says here that the council received a written report from North Yorkshire. I've seen it before. Anyway, councillor Cockroft isn't here this evening, he's on holiday currently. I don't know whether you've got any questions to ask councillor Cockroft. If you can send an email to him or address him when he's here next time. Councillor Cockroft.
Yes, it's unfortunate that councillor Cockroft is not here today, so I needed to ask him a question. However, I think it would be appropriate to still raise the matter as I believe we need to write to North Yorkshire Council for clarification about the funding outstanding from the one million pound investments in Project Sunshine, which we were led to believe is circa two hundred and forty-six thousand pounds. I was unable to attend last week's meeting of the Firey Community Partnership to receive the draft minutes. And I became most concerned when I read in those minutes, and I quote, "An officer confirmed from the two hundred and forty-six thousand pound monies that have been outstanding and not committed for some time, North Yorkshire Council were looking to remove the outstanding balance to other projects. But the officer had managed to hopefully secure a hundred and fifty thousand pounds worth of this to complete the Glengarden signage project for the town council, the two empty boards on the seafront and the wayfinding project for the community partnership." This is still to be confirmed, with the remaining balance being removed by North Yorkshire Council. I emailed the officer who made the same asking for clarification, expressing my concern that the town council had not been consulted prior to this decision. He replied, and I quote, "My understanding is that the decisions about budgets have already been made, but I will seek confirmation and get back to you." That doesn't happen. The position, as I understand it, is that an amount of a hundred and fifty thousand has been retained from the Firey Master Plan budget for the signage and wayfinding post. And we need to have the precise allocations confirmed. And so they're working towards getting the signage and wayfinding work to procure in an order as placed before then. Madam Mayor and colleagues, to say the time appalled about this is an understatement. To say that, as far as I'm aware from the minutes, that this statement was not at least quid is unbelievable. We're supposed to be working in partnership, yet such decisions are apparently taken without any consultation with the town council. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just finally say about the minutes, we're talking about the Queen's Partnership minutes. How's the problem then?
The minutes of the Queen's Partnership, is it the intention of the Queen's Partnership to share those minutes with this county?
No, we don't have to, shall we?
Then it had to.
No, then say it had to.
I thought that it would be very helpful to this committee if we actually knew what was going on at the Queen's Partnership, which we would learn if we saw the minutes.
And so I actually give a regular, sorry, through you, shall I? I actually give a regular update every month about Queen's Partnership.
You don't tell us everything. We didn't know about this.
It's actually my report and Anne-Marie is.
It's been late now. They've already decided, Anne-Marie.
Councillor Holden. She has proposed with her councillor, her councillor, her councillor, sorry.
Well, I feel we ought to write a strong letter to North Yorkshire Council. And I would suggest we write to the chief executive, Richard Flinton, expressing our deep concern.
And I would like to check and ask the first one, thank you. Do we all agree on that, to move forward?
Yeah.
Anne-Marie's got something you have to do with, what you've heard.
Can I ask a caveat on tonight's proposal? Within that, can we ask how that came about and what due process was followed? As my dear colleague, councillor Cockroft, rightly says, we've not been used to it. So what due process and can they document and share their documentation of said due process? For us as a council, please.
Are we all in agreement that the last part, caveat? Yes, thank you. Okay. Did you, sorry, I was going to say, did you actually link councillor Cockroft into your email?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. North Yorkshire Police Report, January seven. The report has been certainly edited. Are there any questions this evening? And if nobody's on the bleeding. I think the sergeant keeps saying she's going to come, but she's not turned up yet. But if you've got any issues that you want to raise at the plate, if you make a direct approach, that's the way it follows, isn't it?
I haven't contacted this one.
Yeah. So moving on then, the town park and air flow report. I hope you've all had the chance to read the report. Should I ask if there are any questions regarding it? There's only two other words.
Now, I think the recommendations from the committees are also to be spoken on.
Okay, agenda item nine, minutes of the last meeting held on the thirteenth of August. Are there any matters of accuracy previous regarding these minutes?
Through you, Chair. Yes. In the section regarding bank authorisations by councillor Adnitz, Dr Gussford and Hulden Bank, the minutes have been changed to, all stated they could not authorise bank transactions now they were no longer in place. The original minutes prepared by the assistant clerk were factually correct and stated that they resigned from the committee on principle and would not be prepared to sign cheques. I would also ask that it be recorded in the minutes of this meeting that their refusal to authorise payments is purely a personal preference as there is no council regulation which prevents authorisation following resignation from a committee or delegated council permission in the interim period until new signatories are added to the bank approvals mandate. Further to the last meeting, it should also be recorded, they also refused to countersign the banking approvals mandate, which would give the new signatories access to the bank account. Through you, Chair, I would request that you do not sign off these minutes as a true and accurate record because they are not.
I understand, and I do remember quite clearly, that it was stated at the last council meeting that non-committee members of the finance committee could not be signatures because they wouldn't know of how the council finances work.
No, that wasn't stated. That was recommended, well, that was a suggestion made by one of our councillors, that only people who were on the financial committee.
It was agreed by everybody, which was why nobody stood up and said that they would sign them. So you're saying that the fact that people have resigned from the committee should have signed anything is absolutely wrong?
I'll just go in your class here, because she's not certified.
I did send the email out to all the members of council quite a while ago to say that whilst the signature may choose not to sign, there is nothing in our financial regulations during the time of the election. I did get from the fire line, so I believe.
You get a request from me?
No.
But I know, because I didn't get it.
Councillor Holden.
Councillor Cockroft clarified that I have said by email, and I said it at the last meeting with full control, that I resigned for personal reasons. I was not at the meeting when it all happened on staffing. Councillor Cockroft and I were not attendants. So whatever happened after that and whatever reason councillor Adnitz, councillor Scotty Huston resigned for, being it whatever was they said it is there, mine was solely personal reasons. I was put in a very difficult situation and I resigned because of that. And that's the truth. And your recollection and my recollection are totally different. And being that we don't have a recording to understand what was said, I just think we're at an impasse because it's everybody's definition of what was said. Because my definition also is that we said that, I definitely said that I wouldn't sign because I was no longer on the finance committee.
Councillor Holden.
Surely it's for this committee to decide whether or not we sign us on these lines?
It is, it's not the mayor. No, it's up to the committee to approve them or not. If it's just people approve them, then that's what the council says is a true reflection.
Yes. As a point of information, if the Chair does not agree with them, they can actually know that they're signing it, but they do not approve them.
And that's fine, yes.
I'll be prepared to do that because I don't, we've no evidence which the battle, what has happened. We haven't got any recording, audio recording.
Any good evidence, please?
No.
And I'd also like to say that when I messaged the clerk to say that I would like some changes on, for my personal changes, nothing to do with anything else as such as being suggested tonight apart from the one point I brought forward. There wasn't an issue then between us changing from ex-mayor to councillor Hulden Bank. And there was no issue with the other bit that I declined the badge. It was councillor Adnitz's email that came in whilst I was sessioned with you. And I rang him up and we went through what we thought could be changed and what you thought could be changed together. And there was a small part on that that you were happy to change because councillor Fennigan had asked you a different question and you were happy to go with that one. So I think it's very difficult for you, Chair, because for you to say that you don't agree with them is like basically saying, what happened at the meeting?
Michael, sorry, can I? Yeah. Definitely, I did also say that I had deliberately not changed the vast majority of Audrey's minutes.
You did.
Because I was worried that I would then, in fact.
Yes.
That would get in trouble for it. So I appreciate you saying, yes, we did agree those minutes. But I did also have in mind that I did not want to alter what the deputy clerk had written unless there was factual reason and why not.
I don't disagree with that, but that's not my problem. I'm not a deputy clerk and I'm not a clerk. I'm saying my recollection of what happened that night. And I'm just really sad that already there's been an argument about something because the minutes are already out.
Through you, Chair. Councillor Holden.
Yeah. The changing of the could not to would not, from would not to could not is a substantial change. It totally changes the minute.
Councillor Thorne.
Yes, I think council terms are very upfront. Cannot and would not legally are very different contexts. And it changed the reasonable man theory of law, English law, which is what we're all governed by. Some people think we're not, but clearly we are sadly for those people. And it does, it's a substantial change of context. And if you look at contractual law, then that is a very substantial change of terminology, of contextual nature of a contract. And a verbal contract is what's been drawn up in a minute. It's an agreement, it's a legally binding document.
Thank you. Councillor Holden.
I don't disagree with the councillors for all the reasons.
I'm glad.
But I did think that we were all, most of us, like, we're at the meeting, with all of our own recollections of what's being said. So I'm in full agreement, it's a very difficult position because there is no recording to go back on, which is most unfortunate. And that's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you. So I will actually sign off the minutes, but I will actually make a record that there was a discrepancy.
I propose one.
You propose?
Yeah. I propose one second for the actual minutes.
Well, I propose they were accurate. In my opinion, they were accurate. So we have a second date. So we have a second date. Okay. So tell me about that through what?
And that was in the process? Sorry? I'm lost in the process. All those in favour of that, all those who agree that the minutes, as stated in the course that we sent out, are an accurate record?
Sorry, sorry.
And what is tomorrow's?
No. I can't comment. So I'm staying in?
I'm staying because it's too much to just take in.
I'm staying. Can I stay for ten minutes?
I am, yeah.
Four hours, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So how's that live then, Chair? So there's four that agree, one that didn't and five that stayed.
So it's passed.
So it's passed.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Take that. Happy to hear it. And I'll be happy with it, so it's passed.
I think we ought to know that there were that number of extensions because of that reason.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on then to the council committee minutes and reports from local organisation meetings. Council should receive a summary by the Chair of the meeting, fill out a note for the minutes. So I'll invite councillor Fennigan to speak to the show of the committee's staff meeting.
We had a recent staff meeting and reviewed some of those policies. We called an extraordinary staff meeting for next Tuesday to discuss our future plans for the recruitment of new town clerk.
Councillor Holden.
I would like to ask the deputy mayor, why she's organised a meeting on a Tuesday when I told her categorically I cannot make a Tuesday?
Unfortunately, that.
Could nobody else, could other people not make any other day of the week?
So because of the seriousness.
I know it's serious, which is why I want to be there.
Unfortunately, that would, we need to call that meeting as soon as possible and that would be early.
What about Monday? Monday? What about Wednesday?
Unfortunately, I'm not available on Monday due to personal commitment, so Tuesday.
Oh, it's a personal commitment?
We have to give enough notice of an extraordinary meeting, which is what.
You asked me to say when they would be available and I said any day but not Tuesday.
And unfortunately, for the extraordinary meeting, that would be earliest date possible for the majority of that committed to attend. We've taken into account that you're not available on Tuesday for the rest of the staff meeting. And we have actually changed the date, so we will be able to accommodate your request.
Well, thank you very much. Very important, why am I not invited to because I can't come?
You have been invited, but unfortunately due to.
I have been invited, but nobody's been invited yet.
An email actually went, an email actually went out today.
Okay, we must be on it.
So I am invited.
Yes, you have been invited.
Even though you know I can't come, okay? Fine.
Okay, can we move on then? Councillor Cockroft, do you want to speak something out to the committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah. Number of items to report on. The council offices. New PVC windows had to be installed to the two main floors downstairs, running onto Queen Street. And quotes are being obtained to replace the individual. windows at the rear of the building with PVC again. The contractor has been engaged to undertake repainting work on the building. Not only will this protect the building, but it will also reduce the amount of vegetation that sometimes grows on the terrace. The removal of a large display cabinet to allow the fixing of the citizens board has shown that some redecoration is required. Unfortunately, the job is too small for firms to quote, however, this does provide the opportunity to look at the whole chamber. We intend removing all of the pictures, certificates, et cetera. This will allow the numerous hooks to be removed and any repairs undertaken. We may be able to just touch up the repairs, or we might have to redecorate all of the wall. Consideration will be given to which items continue to be displayed in the chamber and the respective formats. Uh, regards, uh, our notice boards around the town, a request to relocate the community notice board on Murray Street has been approved, and we are contacting North Yorkshire Council for permission to relocate it to John Street in the vicinity of the blue plaque by the post office. Uh, commemorative seats and lawn cemetery, North Yorkshire Council are currently reviewing the different policies it inherited when the district and borough councils were merged with the county council. A report was due to go to its management board on the twenty ninth of July, and then go forward to the executive. I haven't seen any agenda yet. Uh, I've seen the outcome of the survey of all the commemorative seats conducted by North Yorkshire Council earlier this year. To say I'm disappointed is an understatement. As far as I can see, they've just taken the list that we provided to them, looked at the condition of each, and included taking a photo. We were originally told that they would do that, plus create a map showing the location of each and every seat. This has not been forthcoming. Uh, the committee has submitted its budget for the next financial year, and finally, uh, we, the town council will be taking over the ownership and management of the sea mine on the seafront. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Robinson?
Uh, thank you. Um, I missed the last meeting, as you know, still a real hell. Um, but you're talking about removing all the pictures and potentially then redecorating, but it was agreed at the previous meeting that the rest of the county council didn't need redecorating, because there had been done.
Yeah, well, it's a case of whether we can match the paint on, on that section of wall, really, but also if, if we can get the exact colour, that's fine. We, we can repair where the hooks are and, and, and then touch it up, but it, I, I just think upfront, saying it may need the whole-
But being the positioning, is it that important? I mean, I would say this is lighter than that anyway, and it's the lighting, not the paint colour.
Don't know.
It's what?
I don't know.
Oh, sorry. I didn't-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It just seems a waste of money to decorate a room that's recently been decorated.
I don't disagree. If we can get away without having to redecorate the whole, uh, room, we will.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But I'm just putting forward the options.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it there. Okay. Uh, so moving on, can I invite councillor Karen Hubbert to speak? Mr Chair, Finance and General Purposes.
Thank you. Finance and General Purposes committee met on Monday, and the committee have three recommendations that they wish to make to the council. One of them regards the situation with our banking and our bank mandate. I would suggest that is an item on the agenda for later on, but I would suggest we might wish to discuss that item after we've exploded press and public, which we are planning to do later on. So if that's okay with the rest of the council, I propose that's what we do.
It seems a sensible way of following.
Thank you. The two other recommendations are on the mayoral allowance and the deputy clerk laptop. And I'll take the deputy clerk laptop first. This machine is not fit for purpose. Now, by the end, I think it's of October, Windows 10 will no longer be supported, our deputy clerk laptop rules on Windows 10, which means after the end of October, that laptop will be open to cyber attack, possibly leaving this council in a very difficult position. Therefore, Finance and General Purposes would like to recommend to Finance, to finance the council that a new laptop is purchased as soon as possible, and we think because of the time limit, that we should go through our original provider prism. So my proposal from Finance and General Purposes is that a new laptop for our deputy town clerk is purchased from prison as a matter of urgency, and this is to safeguard the IT security of the council, and in particular its financial systems.
Thank you. I'll just- Councillor Thompson? Okay. I mean, if we're going to, we're really hard to figure out.
I have a further comment on IT equipment before we move on.
I mentioned that Windows 10 will cease to be supported at the end of October. All of our STC devices run on Windows 10, which means all of our STC devices will also become open to all sorts of mischief by the end of October. So it's imperative that we work very quickly, and I've been speaking to Mike Cockrell as vice of Finance, as a way, um, of how we can expedite that matter and bring proposals to next Finance Committee, so that we can, um, get rid of that risk. Um, we're planning on meeting again in a month's time, so we still have time to make decisions on that. At Finance and General Purposes on Monday, we were notified the committee able to make a recommendation at that time, but I'm fully expecting that next meeting, which was before the next council meeting, we will be able to come with recommendations to alleviate that risk. Janine, you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Um, I mean, the, your next meeting is October, and our, I believe, did you say that our contract with prison ends in October?
It's Windows 10, support for Windows 10 runs out at the end of October. Finance and General-
Through prison, isn't it?
No, no, no. That's the operating system for the actual machine.
Yes.
Our next meeting, Finance and General Purposes, is very early in October, so we, we've got time. So I'm fully expecting that at next town council meeting, we are hoping we can bring some recommendations to alleviate that risk. Councillor?
Um, is there any potential for the laptops to be updated to Windows eleven? Has that been looked into as a brand new laptop?
At this time, sorry, I'm, I have asked the question. Some of them are capable, but the answer that I got back was that, um, quote, they will fall out within a month or two.
Yeah.
Councillor, do you think most of our laptops are extenuating and running out?
Councillor Robinson?
I would also like to acknowledge, I am very disappointed that we're remaining with prison, and stand in necessity now because it's short notice, but this should have been done months ago, and it was requested that it be done a month ago, that we are keen to change in our plan.
Councillor Thorne?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was under the impression of the finance committee that we had, through our lawful pledge, determined that, that our procurement wasn't solely through prison.
Indeed. Indeed. And our, if I could come back?
Yeah.
Um, we have determined, Janine, and we're about to find out, we do not have to procure through prison, we are suggesting we procure our deputy clerk, she could do that, it's in the air, it matters. We are looking at alternat, alternatives, and we are not contracted to them to supply us with equipment.
Councillor Cockrell?
And I answered it, councillor Robinson, I think it's worth pointing out that our contract with prison ends the next year, so this is an ideal opportunity to, to look at everybody's IT equipment, and we are looking at alternative suppliers.
Yes, sir. Could I just clarify a thing? Will prison made, I mean, we have a contract with them that they will support, uh, will they do that for a laptop that we haven't purchased?
We are, the proposal they've made announced is that we purchase our laptop through prison. Future laptops may not be purchased through prison, and we will negotiate accordingly as we move forward, and this council will be kept fully informed, recommendations to be made, um, decisions to be made by this council, not by Finance and General Purposes. Oh, you mean, recommendations?
Councillor Thorne, do you want to say something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, all I would say was, I think it would be wise by a clerk to just go through the contract with prison, to see when the notice of contract renewal or expiry, um, takes place, and how long we've got then. Therefore, usually six months within an IT contract.
I believe, uh, from what Jason said, it is one month, because it's twelve months old in contract. However, I will check that.
No, 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 it's only contract, it will be one month, so, yeah.
Councillor-
Madam, I can move on to the second proposal, that's okay.
I was just going to say, I just think we need to do whatever we need to do to make this council say it.
And that's been confirmed.
So-
Right, if I can, I can move on to the second proposal, which is about the mayoral allowance. Um, following discussion, Finance and General Purposes recommend to finance the town council that the mayoral allowance shall reimburse all legal and reasonable out-of-pocket expenses incurred by the mayor up to the previously agreed limits on production of VAT receipts or log of expenditure for which receipt cannot be obtained, for example, donations, rations, and purchase perhaps of wine to the table at a length that the mayor is posting. So our proposal is simply that.
That's my understanding.
I would like to say that, because no mayor should be out of pocket, I said that.
Okay.
So the other, from councillor Hubbert?
No.
Of course, the other did. The other did. I'm in agreement, we're all clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And the third proposal I'll bring up, I said later on, at present, I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Was there a proposal seconded for the deputy clerk laptop?
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Oh, yes, I did.
There's a lot going on. Yep. All right, let's move it on, can we invite councillor Robinson to speak to show of the planning minutes?
Um, yes, we're having a meeting on the eighth, this is go ahead. We possibly could be quoted, both councillor Hubbard and councillor Donoghue have given their proposals. So I thought the best way forward was to have that meeting start before this meeting, um, and unfortunately, councillor Hubbard decided he couldn't come because they're going out of the meeting. I have to admit, I was extremely disappointed by this, especially given councillor Hubbard's discussion at the meeting last month, where he said that council meeting should come first. We did not accept his apologies for the final meeting, thinking. I don't think it's worth discussing what happened at the meeting because it was so-
There, councillor Hubbert?
I just want to clarify the issue. Um, what I said was, at the previous meeting and another meeting, Tom, when Ray, that I actually said that I felt that people should try and take limited, in preference to attending other bodies.
So I have to agree with you.
Sorry, um, I said in, in preference to attending other outside bodies, I mean, if we were to draw up a league table of attendance at meetings, I might not be top of the league, but I would be way, way off the bottom for my commitment to attendance meetings. I won't do two meetings in a row, I have a commitment every full, full town council meeting that I eat out on my way to full council. This was changed last Friday to the tenth, I believe. I couldn't come on Monday, my wife hasn't been with me for two years, she had to see her eye specialist for clarity, and she had to go to hospital at seven o'clock on Monday night. Now, you know, guess I would put that first.
Absolutely.
And, and let's go back a little way, the planning committee, first Monday in the month, as many years.
Yes, and that rule now, because councillor Fennigan has given it a-
Well, I know, but-
They will go back to-
The appointment, the appointment I'm on there was not changed at all. Anybody who's trying to get off the appointment, you know, pick and choose, you know, as high as commitment as I'm on in a-
No, you're complaining about you not coming to the latest Monday?
I won't do two meetings back to back, and I won't change-
Well, we'll keep that in mind then.
Yeah.
We could have done it tomorrow. I think it was unfortunate, but I mean, we all have commitments, and we are all boundary on this council as well, and things do crop up from time to time, it is a shame.
You don't keep it, you only got four people on the committee.
Absolutely. Okay.
Can I make a comment, Chair?
You can.
There are certain people on this council who say we can't make a meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah.
They have the commitment. People have the commitment.
So if you know that, you must watch.
We knew we had that, but we have the commitment.
Well, going through a meeting, I just don't see that's commitment that you're going to wire against the meeting, but there you go.
Okay, thank you. We have, uh, the chance to say that, but we have to move on. Um, the events and lighting meeting, um, we couldn't have that recently because we weren't for it, so we will be calling another committee meeting shortly, and hope that, you know, our enough members can attend. Thank you. Do we have any reports from members meeting local organisations that you want to speak back on?
No.
Councillor Thompson?
Yes, I'll give you those community partnerships today. Um, the Fingerpost project is progressing well.
You have stated that, the car-
The Fingerpost project is progressing well. Our North Yorkshire council project officer is seeking quotes for the updated signage in the same size for current signage. Howard Wallace, this had already been brought to the attention by councillor Cockrell, but it was going to fall apart on my report. Howard Wallace, the principal regeneration officer, first in Molton, informed the community partnership that he had been able to ring offence of £150,000 to cover the cost of this project and the Langardon signage project. He did suggest that any remaining finances from the remains of the £246,000 balance allocated to filing would be reabsorbed back into the North Yorkshire general budget. That was the first that anybody had heard, um, about that. Um, he also informed us that as there were no other ongoing filing projects, um, spending money on, so they weren't aware if filing town councils had got any projects, um, that they were wanting to work on, um-
I think it would have just been nice to be asked, wouldn't it? Because we did have the same structure that we wanted to, um, see entirely, um, so we need some clarification, like you said, to have those decisions carried out.
Um, we are in communication with North Yorkshire council regarding the accessibility study commissioned by the community partnership, um, so copies have been sent to North Yorkshire, uh, to Richard Flynn, and they've been, um, sent down to some of the leaders department, um, who thanks to the communication by councillor Cockrell. Um, we've already started, um, negotiations with North Yorkshire on, um, some of the work that needs to be done, um, so that's a really positive, um, note, so that's for the benefit of filing as a whole, um, which will increase accessibility, hopefully, um, for the residents.
Councillor Robinson?
Well, I'll ask what the accessibility report is.
Um, I have mentioned it on a number of occasions, like my update-
I don't remember.
So the community partnership decided that they would, um, request an accessibility study be completed to filing, um, it's the first time that it's ever been done, um, it's a very thorough document, and it highlights problems for everybody, basically, regarding the accessibility to studies, for example, drop curbs, access, um, to the toilet.
Oh, maybe I do remember.
Um, so it, it's a really thorough report, really informative, um-
And we get to see that, don't we?
By the town council do have a copy, um, but if you do wish to circulate it to outside bodies, we would ask that you ask permission of the community partnership, the ownership, like the, the base of the council, you know. Um, but the reason being that there wasn't any others is that no documents for the major were.
Yes.
So literally only those that directly-
Yeah. The, the main thing was about salaries and stuff, but that explains it, that's all. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
All the same, Chair, is, can we just clarify, and the page is nine hundred and eighteen eighty-nine, but I'm not going to call my-
under page is number eighteen eighty-nine, but along with the column, it says six five four five. Uh, sorry, which, on which?
With that nicer.
Nice one. Are you looking at the one that was left on your... I think that's previous. No, that's previous month, that's mine. Yeah, you've got this one, the first couple of them, the details of it. Just all those sheets. That, that's minutes of last, you know, time. You've got ten years. I've got July, I'm a recording player. I've got July, it's well on my desk. Yeah, I've got those. You should be looking at August. Yeah. So I know the query is done regarding the schedule of term. Do we have a personal agenda for that one? Counselor Cockrell, you proposing? Counselor Robinson? Thank you. Do you not agree? Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the banking situation, we're going to start with, um, the money point of interest. The next time this Counsel, uh, passing, isn't it, Counselor Pollard is to receive an update on the policies still working approval. Remember how many questions or comments on this matter?
Which of the comments?
Uh, we'll, we'll, yeah, we hand over to you.
I've got the overview.
So, um, so at the May, um, annual meeting, there were a list of policies and procedures that were to be ratified that weren't. And they were to go to committees for recommendations to then come back to council. Um, so we haven't done that yet, we will be doing that. Some of them are strategic planning and would have, um, paper plaiture. However, there are a number of policies that don't have committee delegated. I was hoping to get this all ready for you for today, but it, I haven't been able to. So, uh, if it's okay, I will, um, make a list, circulate this to everybody and then we can just put it and let you...
I think it's good way forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, have we got to the final explosion of the second public now?
Yes.
Okay. So, Miss Ock, due to the confidential and sensitive nature of the following items, members of the result touch with the press and public on the meeting. Um, okay. Very nice to see you. Thank you for coming to the evening. You might need to sign out. Yeah, as you go out and, um, can I sure let you out? So, can I get that from you? Like a bit, while I'm on the road. Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye. Thank you. We didn't actually propose the second, I think, with a... No, can you have a try and... I've proposed that we actually, uh, because we've been... I think that... And we all agree, no? I was actually recording that.
Yeah.
Uh, there are a few things that we need to follow to get up there.